Good evening. I will call the City of Woodburn City Council Meeting of February 24th to order. I would like to start with a flag salute, which Council President Schaub, can you please stand a second?
Sure. I proudly make this be provided by the United States of America and assume the Republic for which this ends. Welcome to the House in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have roll call, please.
Counselor Cornwell.
President.
Counselor Brizuela.
President.
Counselor Schaub.
Uh, President.
Counselor Wilk.
Here.
Counselor Cantu.
Here.
Counselor Grijhova.
Here.
Mayor Lonergan.
Here.
Thank you. Under announcements, we have one announcement of our March 10th. City Council meeting has been canceled due to several council members being out of town on business. So our next meeting will be second or the fourth Monday in March. It will be the only March meeting at this time. Do I have any appointments? Did I have any meeting government, government organization meetings? I did not have any proclamations or presentations. I do have one item under my new title reflection. Uh, I want to share. Uh, last week I went to a funeral for Jim Prosser. Mr. Prosser had been a fireman for the city of Woodburn for thirty years. Um, and I just want to, uh, comment the, the, uh, the fantastic turnout of our fire district. And thank them for quite a presentation during that ceremony with the, uh, with vehicles and about thirty firemen in uniform. Uh, giving Mr. Prosser send off. So it was very touching and well deserved for, for his, his work in the, in the city. So moving on then to presentations, our first one is Mr. Reeves. Please come forward and tell us how happy you are serving the, this legislative session and having a lot of fun.
Oh, yeah. And I've got a presentation here as well. And I'm going to follow along with on my computer here. Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, my name's Zach Reeves and from CFM Advocates. It's good to be back here with you all for my basically annual appearance in front of you all. And I am just going to give you all a brief update on kind of the ongoing state legislative session. Uh, and happy to answer any questions that you all might have about, uh, you know, Woodburn issue. So next slide, please. So a, uh, and that looks like I got the wrong version of it up there. Uh, we are not in Van County or Woodburn, but, um, so, uh, just a brief, brief update. I've got it right on my computer here, I promise. Just a brief update, uh, we are about a month or so, little bit over a month into the, uh, long session. And as you all recall, that is when we do our, uh, biannual, biannual budget. Um, so the state is in the process of setting that, uh, as well as introducing about three thousand ish bills that are up for debate down there in Salem. Um, we are in a little bit of a leadership turnover, uh, at a lot of levels down there. We have a new, brand new Speaker of the House, a relatively new Senate President. Uh, and both the, the House, well, the Senate Minority Leader and the House Minority Leader are, um, old new leadership faces. Um, so it's, um, given the issues that are facing the state and the important issues that they have to tackle. Um, having new leadership in there, uh, it kind of remains to be seen what that looks like in terms of what the scope of session looks like. How many big issues we tackle, which we'll get to in a little bit. And kind of how successful they're going to be down there in Salem. So, um, next bullet here is, is the, the, um, budget outlook. Uh, we will talk about here in a little bit. We have a, the next revenue forecast is on Wednesday of this week, I believe. And so that is when lawmakers will get their next, um, estimation of what state revenues are going to look like for the next two years. Uh, we have a, a new state economist replacing, uh, one who, um, at times struggled to pinpoint how much revenue, uh, the state was going to have, which resulted in, um, as we've seen in the recent years. Uh, some pretty massive kicker, uh, payments back to taxpayers. So it remains to be seen, um, how accurate this new economist is going to be, but that's something to pay attention to, uh, moving forward. Next slide, please. Uh, so I guess we, uh, went through that, um, and I, I did get the Woodburn delegation right on, on that, uh, on that slide. But as I mentioned, we've got new leadership. Um, these sessions are really driven by, um, steady hands at the top of the, of the ticket. And, um, so far in this first month, we have seen, um, some big issues have hearings out there, many that are going to, you know, if they pass would have either positive or negative impacts on, on the city. Um, and we haven't seen a real sense of direction yet in terms of, of how session is going to go. Um, and from folks who've been there for a while, that's a little bit concerning. Um, obviously it's early in session, but, um, there are a lot of big ticket items that, that are being pushed by, uh, members of the majority party that, that, um, could have some, some pretty serious implications. So, um, moving on to the Woodburn delegation in it. We, um, as many of, most of you know, all of you know, um, the Woodburn seat in the House was the one that decided that there will be super majorities in both the House and the Senate. Which allows Democrats to raise taxes, uh, on a three-fifth vote without any sort of Republican votes. So, um, uh, Leslie Munoz, who, who represents this area, she narrowly beat Tracy Kramer, which gave the Democrats, uh, thirty-six seat in the House to match up to their eighteen in the Senate. Uh, which allows them to, uh, as I said, pass revenue raising measures without any sort of, of Republican vote. So, uh, as we'll talk about in a bit, there are a few, uh, big ticket revenue raising measures that are potentially on the table. Whether the majority party can keep their folks in line in order to get some of these things across the finish line is, is, uh, very much up in the air. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so as I mentioned before, um, with the new state economist comes a new revenue forecast model. Lawmakers get a, a revenue forecast every quarter. So we're in the first quarter of twenty twenty-five. They'll have this one and then they'll have one in May that gives them their final target number to shoot at when they're creating the state budget. That'd be, prior to the, uh, new federal administration, we had, um, both ARPA and other federal one-time fund source that we, uh, the state and local governments have come to depend on for the last four years or so. Those spigots are starting to turn off. Um, that, that pace has been rapidly accelerated potentially by the, by the new administration. There's a lot of uncertainty at the state level, as I'm sure there is at the local level, as to what the impacts of the federal administration's actions are going to be on state budgeting. And so that is, that is kind of the big unknown in the state budgeting process is what a potential absence of federal funds on some big ticket items, be it the Medicaid tax, or be it some of these transportation packages that we are, uh, programs that we have been looking at. Will be, and, and so that has, um, just injected a lot of uncertainty into the overall state budget picture. Cause if we lose federal funds over here in one agency, that has a knock on effect for all sorts of other agencies as they go to try to fill that hole with state funds they'll have to take from somewhere. The December outlook in the revenue forecast was positive. We were up, um, about five hundred million dollars from the last forecast. And this is, that was the first one delivered by the new state economist. Um, we will see on Wednesday what the, the, the broader budget picture looks like. We have been expecting basically since COVID, we have expecting, expected revenues to, to drop. Um, and more or less, we just have not seen that. It's been pretty steady, if not improving since, uh, COVID. So as, as I mentioned, the upcoming forecast is on Wednesday, uh, you can, uh, next slide, please. So some of the broader session themes that we're seeing this year, um, it's, it's, you know, it's your greatest hits that we've seen for the last few years. It's, it's housing and homelessness, uh, it's a continuation of the behavioral health programs that they funded in the twenty twenty-four session. The K-12 budget with education is always a big one. Um, as we've seen in the last few sessions, the legislature is trying to prioritize water and water infrastructure. Uh, and then finally we are looking at, um, a, uh, potential transportation package. So back up to the top there, Governor Tina Kotek has, um, came into office outlining a, a goal of, of thirty-six thousand new units of housing. Uh, they are, the governor's office is continuing to try to, um, implement policies that incentivize that. Uh, what we have seen at the local level is that has not always been the case. Some of these, uh, that the bills relating to housing that have been passed in recent years have been problematic. Um, I, I, I know that Woodburn, uh, is very much the exception to the rule in terms of the amount of development that is occurring around here. Um, you all are fortunate to, to be able to continue with a lot of that work and provide some, some much needed housing to a lot of folks around here. Uh, on the behavioral health side, we've seen, uh, at the passage of House Bill four thousand and two in the twenty twenty-four session with recriminalized. Um, a lot of the activities that were decriminalized under measure one-ten on January third. Recently, in the last six months, uh, the deflection programs that are stood up by the county, so in our case Marion County, um, have been coming online with mixed success. It's still fairly early to see those results in terms of how these changes in terms of the recriminalization, but also providing the deflection pathway out of, uh, the, the criminal justice system. Too early to see how, how that's going to play out across the state, um, given that they're running by the counties, we're likely to see, um, thirty-six different results for thirty-six different counties, right? Depending on how these are set up. Uh, they are, uh, they, they, the House Bill four thousand and two allocated funding for counties to set these deflection programs up. The issue is that is only one year of funding. They are going to need additional funding to continue to provide these resources to folks who are arrested for, uh, possession of illegal drugs to potentially have an off-ramp if they so choose. Um, education, we don't touch on too long. The K-12 budget, as we know, is always a big ticket item in the state. Um, the number that the, uh, education advocates ask for continues to balloon. That is often the first budget that is, that is passed off these, uh, the, the floors of, of the House and the Senate, um, to get that issue out of the way, put that to bed, uh, and move on. That hasn't happened yet, but, um, that will undoubtedly be the first big budget fight of the season. Uh, on the waterfront, we had fairly significant investments in water infrastructure last session. Uh, there are conversations happening right now around putting together another, uh, water infrastructure package. This revenue forecast on Wednesday will go a long ways towards informing, uh, how much money the state is going to have to, uh, dedicate towards water policy programs and, and water infrastructure. Uh, and then saving the, the, I guess, last but certainly not least, um, a potential transportation package. Uh, many of you were around in twenty seventeen when the state passed House Bill twenty seventeen, which was approximately a, a five billion dollar, uh, statewide transportation package. It including funding for things like the Rose Quarter. And that, we are about eight years out from the last transportation package. These things generally happen on about a ten-year, uh, interval. So we are, are just about due for a, uh, a larger transportation package statewide. There's a group of legislators who are trying to do this. Um, the issue is that the gas tax, which we traditionally use to fund, um, infrastructure, uh, roads and bridges in the state is no longer a sustainable, uh, method of, of funding infrastructure. But because of increased costs for the infrastructure and, and a reduced, um, reliance or a increased fuel efficiency, or in some cases completely moving off of, of fuel for, uh, modern vehicles. So, um, it's a complicated problem, given that they are going to have to look for many other, uh, additional new sources of revenue for transportation funding, given that that's, that gas tax is no longer a sustainable mechanism to do so. Uh, it's a complicated jigsaw puzzle and one that faces a lot of obstacles, but, um, given the, the importance of transportation statewide, uh, and some of the budget holes that ODOT, um, is, is facing just to maintain their current operations. It's a, it's a pretty important piece of the puzzle. So move to the, uh, the next slide here. And these are just some of the, the important dates. Obviously we hit the January twenty-first date about a month ago. That was the start of session. Our first big deadline, uh, for session is April ninth, uh, and that is when bills need to be scheduled in their chamber of origin to, uh, to move out, to, to have any chance of, um, surviving in, in the session. So next slide, and with that, uh, that was a lot of information I just throw at you. I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you all may have or elaborate on anything.
Do we have any question? I have a couple. Um, is the state looking into anything? I hear the, the, the beds are looking at lowering Detroit Lake and controlling that water. And it's going to hurt anything down the Saniam Valley due to fish could cause major problems, you know, all the way into Salem and Kaiser. You see anything happening from the state level to protect that?
There haven't been any bills introduced on, on that regard, but I know that there are, there are members down there that are very interested in, you know, flows and, and some of the water issues. Traditionally Senator Girard down there, uh, and the folks who represent the, you know, the, the canyon area have been very involved in that. And I know that also especially Commissioner Cameron with Marion County has also been very active, uh, in those conversations. And they're, they're pretty strong advocates for, um, anything that happens in the canyon, especially post-two thousand and twenty, when we had, you know, the fires and, and some of the, they're, they're sensitive to the recovery that's going on in that, um, region.
Okay. Um, anything this session on the West Side Rail Extension?
There, there, excuse me, Representative Mannix and others have a, um, is, have several vehicles for that. I know that it's already been, as, as we've been involved in city lobby and some of the other metro area conversations, um, you may be asked again to come testify on that. Uh, there will be efforts in that as part of a transportation package. I know we, we, um, I don't know that our, 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 the opposition has changed much. Um, so it's still your, your familiar cast of characters in, in that sense, but there will very much be an effort on that, yes, as session goes along.
Um, residential housing, you see anything loosening up on the capability of a city such as Woodburn to acquire some property without going through state, uh, hassles?
It's, it's, it's too soon to tell. Um, you know, we are, we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that that is a possibility and, and that, um, the city is able to continue to, to develop housing units as it needs.
And I don't know if you heard, we, uh, at our session we had over the weekend, we formed a committee of a couple of people that are love working with you. Council President Schaub, Councilor Wilk.
Hi.
So, uh, and myself at, at times. So, uh, look forward to, uh, carrying on the conversation, maybe freeing up a little Scott's time.
Yep, Mr. Mayor Scott informed me of that today, so I'm, I'm ready to get to work.
Zach, um, of course, we need transportation funding for local street systems and we need infrastructure money for wastewater as well as water. What are the odds that some of those dollars may funnel into local communities so that we can invest them in our own infrastructure?
Yeah, I would, I would say that if we have specific projects that we are looking to, um, use to, or to, to access funding for, then we should, um, get those in front of the legislature sooner than later.
In prior years, the, um, um, there's been suggestions that, uh, local SDC fees, which we use to fund infrastructure development in Woodburn should be, um, cut, waived, prohibited in order to promote more housing. So you create more housing, a less infrastructure to support it. Is that still something that's bantered around by various industries?
Yes, um, I, I, and, and I don't, I, I hesitate to, uh, speak too, too, uh, emphatically, but the, the conversations around SDCs have so far been, um, little to nonexistent. That can certainly change. I think there are other pieces of the housing puzzle that are being looked at right now. It's a long session, um, things can change, but as we've seen in the past, you know, three or four sessions, SDCs are inevitably, uh, on the chopping block.
That would be devastating for local governments, particularly Woodburn. It would shift the, the tax burden of growth onto existing residents.
Uh, legislators have heard that message loud and clear from, uh, all of their constituents.
Come up. Well, thank you so much for coming and wish you the, the best the next.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate the update. Next up, we have a presentation on a quarterly financial report. Mr. Turley.
Mayor, members of the city council, Tony Turley, Finance Director for the record. Once again, it, and it's actually the quarterly investment report, not the financial report, but we all, we'll get to that. Before I turn the time over to Lauren to do the presentation, I just wanted to point out that it just came to my attention that we, we have this report on our quarterly investments for our nondiscretionary investment activity, but we don't post it anywhere where the public can see it. So we have added in our financial documents page on the webpage, a link to the quarterly, um, investment report. So that the citizens that want to see it can look at the quarterly investment report and see how we're investing our nondiscretionary, um, investments. We do not have, at this point, and I'll look at how we would put the LGIP investments, because that's also part of our investment portfolio on there as well. But you'll be able to see the quarterly investment report from PFM each quarter. We'll update that report as we get it.
Okay.
So, um, without further discussion, I'll turn the time over to Lauren to do our, um, presentation on how we performed during the last quarter. And as always, get an economic update from her. Lauren?
Thank you, Tony. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Welcome.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Greetings from Central Oregon. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. As Tony mentioned, as I typically do, I'll provide a, a, a brief, uh, economic overview of what transpired over the last three months for the period ended December thirty-first. And then, um, give you some insight into how we navigated, uh, the economic environment and positioned the city's, uh, assets accordingly and, and kept them in a, in a very high quality, safe manner. So I'm going to, there's a lot of pages in your packet in the report, but I'm just going to point us to a couple of pages, um, starting with page four, which gives you an economic snapshot for the period. I'm going to highlight a few, uh, numbers on page four. So the fourth calendar quarter for the period ended December thirty-first, um, pretty much like the, the first three quarters of the calendar year. We saw a lot of, of volatility as well as a lot of, uh, emphasis, uh, by the Federal Reserve on what inflation and the labor market were doing. So if we look at that first row where it says that first, um, section of the table called the labor market, the unemployment rate ended the year at four point one percent. So that was in line with expectations. We're starting to see a little bit of a balance with the labor market. It was quite hot if, as we, um, would say earlier in the year, about three point eight percent as an unemployment rate. Um, we're starting to see things cool a little bit in the labor market, um, even heading into two thousand and twenty-five. The other area focused by the Federal Reserve have been inflation. So hearken back to two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, we had nine percent inflation. The Federal Reserve wants to get that inflation number, I think we all do, down closer to two percent. So if you see at the bottom, uh, portion of that, of the table, bottom third of the table, that second row says consumer price index. So for the period, it says for November, but I have updated numbers through the end of December. So for the period ended December thirty-first, inflation was about two point nine percent, still higher than where the Federal Reserve would like to see, uh, inflation. So they want to see it more around two percent. We're starting to get a little bit closer. And so the, the other element, uh, that related to the volatility in the markets, um, was around the elections. Um, you know, not just at the federal level, but across the, the country at state level, um, uh, elections and, and results as well. Uh, but as it relates to the federal elections, uh, in November, um, as you might recall, the transition did not happen until January, but there's a lot of speculation in the market about what the new policy proposals might be around tariffs, um, taxes and deregulation and what in potential impacts that could have, uh, on the fixed income as well as the equity markets. So one thing we all know is that, um, as with most humans as well, markets do not like uncertainty. So when there isn't certainty available, the markets will tend to, to be a little bit more volatile than usual. Um, if we turn to page five in your packets, speaking of interest rates or yields. So as you might recall, the, the city, um, may only invest its operating funds in high-quality fixed income securities. This is, um, that, that, these are documented, the allowable investments are documented in the city's investment policy. And, um, you get a lot of guidance from the Oregon revised statutes, uh, as well in terms of, uh, what the city may invest in. So the reason I'm, I, I say that as a backdrop is because what we're looking at here on page five are looking at U.S. Treasury yields. And in the upper right-hand corner, we're looking at what we call U.S. Treasury yield curves. So at different points in time, this, these, uh, curves plot maturities of, of U.S. Treasuries at different points in time. And, and what I'll point out to is that solid blue line, light blue line, or where yields were for three months, one year, all the way out to thirty-year maturity treasuries, um, at December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four. And then that dotted blue line represents where, uh, U.S. Treasury yields were just one, uh, quarter prior on September thirtieth. And then the dashed yellow line or gold line represents where yields were one year ago. So what I'm pointing out here, um, that you're like, well, these are just looks like a lot of flat lines, Lauren, and, and that's, that's somewhat the case. Um, but what I will highlight here is that during, um, during the calendar year, um, for two thousand and twenty-four, the Federal Reserve, because we started to see inflation start to, to taper off a little bit, start to cool down. Um, and also the, uh, the labor market as well, uh, the Federal Reserve started lowering that overnight federal funds rate. And they lowered it four different times at four different meetings by a quarter of percent for a total of one percent, um, year over year. Just in the fourth calendar quarter, for this, the most recent quarter ended December thirty-first, they lowered that overnight rate two times. And so bringing that rate to a range of four and a quarter to four and a half percent. So why does that matter? It matters for a number of reasons. Um, one is, uh, as you probably know from your own personal pocketbooks, is that if you have a variable rate mortgage, if you have a variable rate, uh, loan, that has an impact. If those, if those rates come down, then you don't have to pay as much in terms of interest. So you're more affordable in terms of mortgage rates, more affordable in terms of loans going forward. So that's helpful in some ways to, to our pocketbooks. Um, what I'll also point out is that because of the monetary and fiscal policies that, that, that transpired in the fourth quarter, we did see quite an increase in yields, um, in, in various maturities for the quarter. In particular, in that lower left-hand table where it says U.S. Treasury yields, if you look at the two-year and the five-year treasury yield, you'll see that in that fourth column, the change, um, over quarter, interest rates in those two areas rose almost a full percent, so a half to a full percent. So in a three-month period, that's pretty significant. So when you see interest rates rise that quickly, um, there is an inverse relationship between yields and price. So when you see an increase in yields, the value of your existing holdings, um, may start to flatten out or to, to, to start to, um, to, to be a little bit negative, just from a market value perspective. So the, the, the beautiful thing about fixed income securities is you buy them and, um, they, when you hold them to maturity, you don't sell them prior to maturity. When you hold them to maturity, you will get, um, your principal back plus any interest that is owed. But it's helpful to know in the market how your, um, how your bonds are performing, how the portfolio is performing, um, just to give you a sense of, of, uh, how things are going relative to, uh, the market environment. So I am going to, are there any questions about the, uh, economic environment? Cause I'm going to turn to a look at the city's, uh, portfolio that, that we manage on your behalf.
Lauren Scott Erickson, quick question.
Yes.
Inflation really hits the city hard in terms of our, our operations and our ability, particularly in a, where we have a capital intensive project. Um, I know we would like to see inflation two percent, but it sort of feels like the market is unstable based on inflationary concerns. Do you have any projection, predictions about sort of where we might land, uh, with inflation, looking forward to next six months to a year?
Um, it's, it's a great question, Scott. Um, the, the crystal ball is, is in the shop. However, all joking aside, I would say that, you know, we are seeing what we don't know quite yet. So we're starting to see the metrics and the measures that are lowering inflation down to the levels of below three percent. We're seeing those, um, you know, start to stabilize and plateau. Like I said, the labor market, um, some economic growth is starting to, to also stabilize, which is helps to stabilize inflation. The unknowns at this time over the next six months or eight months are some of the administration's policies around tariffs. So tariffs, um, related to, uh, Mexico and Canada were pushed off for a period of time, uh, but the administration said that they are going to move forward with those tariffs. And that is, those do have an inflationary, uh, impact. So how those are going to be counter. So how those are going to be counterbalanced, if you will, remains a little bit unclear, uncertain. So we're just going to have to see how that plays out, but I will absolutely, you know, keep Tony and the city informed. As as more information comes to light.
Thank you. There's there's one other thing I wanted to point out too on the yield curve. Is this is the first time that we've looked at this in the in the three years. That we've had the investment policy in place and then investments where the yield curve is is starting to to go back from an inverted yield curve. You you expect that investments over a longer period of time will give you more yield. Because there's more risk as it goes out further. And up until this yield curve, those longer term investments have been lower than the short term investments and that's starting to turn a little bit. With with the inflation numbers and and with the economy, what it's doing.
That's a great point, Tony. And actually, that leads me into page number 10. When we take a look at the city, the city's portfolio of investment holdings, fixed income holdings. So actually, in the upper left hand side, when it says the portfolio statistics, the yield at cost of the portfolio. So all the securities that we've purchased on your behalf, the yield of that, the average yield of those holdings is 4.42%. So back to Tony's point. The 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 council and staff had the discipline to say, yes, please go ahead and continue to purchase investments. Even if they may not have a higher yield than an overnight rate. Well, locking in those holdings is serving the 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 city well, because again, as I mentioned. The overnight rate now is the the federal funds overnight rate is four and a quarter to four and a half percent. So you'll start to see that continue to come down and those investments that we were able to lock in on your behalf. Out to one, two and three years will continue to generate good, good returns going forward. I will also point out here, again, it's a, it's good on the upper right hand side to see a lot of colors. So the portfolio is highly diversified amongst very high quality fixed income securities. US Treasuries, federal agencies, and when you see corporate notes, those are high quality debt from from corporations. So not to be confused with equities or 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 stock holdings of this particular of these particular corporations, they're rather debt holdings, high quality debt. And when I say high quality, you can see in the lower left hand corner in that pie chart. The average rating of the portfolio is double A plus. The last thing I will point out, I will point out to to counsel and then of course, opening up again to questions is on page 14. In addition to having an investment policy where that provides the guidelines for for PFM asset management to be able to manage your funds. We also work closely with Tony and staff as well as counsel at the outset. To have a benchmark so that you could see how the the portfolio is performing relative to the market. So it's one thing for me to say, hey, your portfolio is doing well, it has a solid yield, but you're like, okay, Lauren, but. You know, how am I doing relative to the market? That will really be the proof, the the proof, if you will. So on page 14, we show the city's portfolio in blue, and these are just the managed holdings as as Tony noted at the outset. Relative to a zero to three year maturity US Treasury index. And so it's pretty much in line, you can see for both the last quarter, last one year and since inception. And since inception was March 31st of 2023, so it's been almost a little, almost two years. So for that period of time, so for the most recent quarter, the portfolio returned 0.3%. That's unanalyzed. If we multiplied that by four is about one and a quarter percent. And then over the last year, about four and a half percent. And then over that last two year period, about 4.4%. So solid returns relative not only to to the market, but also relative to the benchmark. And going forward, as as I noted, there is a lot going on in the markets. We anticipate there will be more impact from. Federal policies. So we'll continue to keep an eye on that, but at the same time, we think we we. Adhere to a disciplined approach, so not taking stock of the noise that's happening, rather to stay. You know, tried and true to the investment policy and keeping your funds safe as well as generating a solid return going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just for informational purposes, so we have about 59 million, 58, 59 million in the discretionary investment pool. And we have 50 million, approximately a little over 50 million in the local government investment pool with the state. So and and overall, we have about 109 million in investments and another 3 million, three to four million in our. Bank accounts to do the operational needs.
Mr. Mayor, not really related to this, but we are working on trying to get the heat turned up in this room. So if you're freezing, you're not alone. We're we're trying to.
At least getting the air turned off helped.
Yeah, Jim's not here. He's our expert. So I've got Jesse, Jesse running around.
Any questions on the portfolio or the presentation?
I don't think so. Looks good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Moving on, our next last presentation is an update on that terrible invasive Emerald Ash Bor. We have a new expert.
Hi, Mayor, Renata Weekly Special Projects Director with Jesse Cuomo, Community Services Director. This is going to be very brief. But Jesse or I or other team members will be coming before the council periodically to provide updates. This is going to be a long. Process. It's a slow rollout of the Emerald Ash Bor and the invasive species. But we, as information becomes available, we want to update the mayor and council and the public really to make sure that folks are informed about potential impacts. To private property. So in August of 2024, Department of Forestry contacted the city to let. Woodburn know that the Emerald Ash Bor invasive beetle was located in Woodburn specifically along the Pudding River. And in Wifel's Park. They phoned us and let us know Forest Grove was the first community. And so Forest Grove has been dealing with this for. Two years now. And so locating in in Woodburn was a bit of a surprise for the state agency. The Department of Forestry then put Marion, Clackamas, Washington and Yamhill Counties under quarantine. I've got some flyers for the public here. We've also got links on the city's website. Basically not to take down trees and move them, the beetle. We're Jesse or I or other staff are not experts on this, but we're learning as we're going, trying to get information out there. So the beetle itself doesn't. Fly. Large distances. This is really a kind of manmade. Spread of the beetle, moving firewood, felling trees and moving them to other properties. Jesse will talk about some of the specifics that parks and community services are dealing with in response. Ah, on your left is the quarantine flyer. Created by Department of Agriculture and in front of you. Department of Ag has also provided this pocket guide to identifying the the beetle and helping folks identify ash trees. Community Services has some inventories completed through our parks. But we don't have a citywide inventory of all trees, especially on private property, because that's not what we deal with. So the scale, we're, you know, working with Department of Agriculture. Watershed councils and any other partners to support the city in any sort of response we can provide. We did apply with Department of Ag's encouragement. For what's called an urban and community forestry grant program to help us respond. With their support and we were informed unfortunately that we were not funded. There was one project in all of Marion County funded. So it's a big disappointment because we put in a, you know. Big effort for this to try and assist the city and residents in responding. And we will continue to work on funding opportunities. I just yesterday was our this morning speaking with. Pudding River and Marion Soil and Water Conservation Districts, if we can get certified volunteers to maybe do some of that inventorying work for us. And and obviously, if we can get that on on assistance, we will see what we can do for private residents as well.
Renata was at the state agriculture that we applied to grant.
It was Department of Forestry. Yes, they had funding and it was called the Urban and Community Forestry seemed perfectly fair to support us. Just they had very limited funding and really tried to distribute the funding throughout the state. So they basically gave awards one per county and. I we don't know if other funding opportunities will come up through that program. But, you know, we're speaking with Department of Land Conservation Development that has planning, funding, Department of Agriculture, Department of Forestry, kind of looking everywhere to get some response assistance. So. This was created by Department of Agriculture. It's open to the public and this is not a complete inventory of ash trees, but it's a resource for members of the public to try and get a sense of where trees. Have been examined and what the state of those trees has been. So this is about 30 trees. That have been inventoried. Again, it's not a complete inventory of every single ash tree in in Woodburn. It's it's those state agency, you know, arborists or foresters who have come into our community. And certified volunteers that are trying to get a sense of the impact. As you can see, a lot of the impacts along the Pudding River watershed. Or the the Pudding River. This is where ash trees either were historically planted or where they. Grow because of their ability to kind of have sit within water. So no surprise there and what we're hearing from Department of Forestry. But a lot of the coloring of the trees that have been examined, I know this is not great. I have one zoomed in map. But you'll see some trees kind of closer to downtown or some markings that are yellow. That means that it's an ash tree that has been looked at and the condition appears to be okay at this point. What we know is that you cannot stop the beetle from spreading and all ash trees in Oregon will eventually be lost. That's what they're seeing in the Midwest. But we can slow the spread, you know, with supporting our supporting folks and we're told. If you look at the Midwest Chicago area, you know, you see street trees just completely annihilated and removed. There's no way to stop the spread or the fact that it will eventually kill all ash trees. So Jesse will speak to kind of how the city plans on responding, but I'll zoom in here. When we got that call from Department of Forestry, it was about Wifels. That was where the first Emerald Ash Bor beetle was found. They did some traps and and those trees are in a pretty bad condition. So you'll see that in the dashboard that Department of Forestry has created, these are labeled red. So along the Pudding River, lots of red. In Woodburn, those trees that have been looked at mostly kind of yellow, okay, except for in Wifels. So we will provide the link of the dashboard to residents. Maricela is actually going to do an e-blast out to the community to make sure we're informing people. What we were told and kind of what steps the city is taking and what steps Department of Forestry recommends. Residents take, we're not going to be creating new information. We're not going to be advising residents. This is really the experts, Department of Forestry, Department of Ag, who will be providing the advice, but I'll turn it over to Jesse to speak.
Before you do that. What it shows, if you can go back one slide, most of your red dots are along Pudding. Remember, all Marion County. How is Marion County reacting and helping you and Woodburn along the idea of preservation?
Yep. So similar to department, you know, what we're hearing with the presentation on state agency and funding. There's there's limited resources. This is something that, you know, nobody wanted to come. And now here we are having to respond. What they did in Washington County and Forest Grove is they created a subcommittee of. City employees, soil and water conservation districts and Department of Forestry staff who kind of come together periodically to advise each other. See where there's opportunities for overlap, cost savings, where can we team up to do work? So I I just participated in the first. Marion area subcommittee conversation on Thursday. Myself, Jesse and his team, depending on what the topic is, will decide who should be part of that, but we're at least communicating with each other. What what arose from that is that there's a March 13th. Training that will be hosted by Soil and Water Conservation Districts and Department of Agriculture here at Woodburn Library, which is pretty exciting. So they're coming out, they're trying to provide training for folks. We'll get that information out there. Our own staff will be participating in that and then they'll go to Wifels because they wanted to kind of look at those trees. So we're. Trying to find ways to kind of tag team or share resources, the subcommittee. Yeah. So so go ahead, Jesse.
Yeah. So and to that point. When, if you remember the first presentation, those are you who were on council at the time when the Department of Forestry came. Like Renata said, it's inevitable that the death of these trees is coming. And so we kind of need to evaluate. High risk areas in which those are. So like, it wasn't, the beetle wasn't actually identified in Senegal Creek over in West Woodburn. It's a very heavily wooded area. They didn't check every tree, things like that. But that area is long is is a good example of if trees are identified that are kind of more within the deeper reaches of that section and not going to affect any homes or anything like that. We'll probably leave those trees just to be, we're not going to look at removal and things like that. Did want to bring to your attention these trees and Wifels. Initially, I think it was three or four trees that were identified. We recently went, went back out with our staff that were trained. Recently and identified with these bore holes, another about 10 trees that were that were infested. And so we're going to be removing those ash trees within that space. And the reason we're going to be removing those and not just leaving them to their own devices is because even though we don't have a trail through this park at this time, it is part of the master plan for the trail development. But this is still kind of a throughway that people do walk in at times and we just, the liability of something and damage going there, you know. We can get snakes, when trees do fall, things like that. So from a safety perspective, we're going to be removing these trees and it'll be after that. March 13th date, but we do want the public to know that from time to time throughout these next however long it is. There might be times that ash trees are coming out. We will look into possibilities of replanting. Obviously, we're not going to be able to replant fully matured trees. That's just not a possibility, but putting in other trees that are will do well in these wetland areas. Will be our goals as well, but we definitely want to want to kind of mitigate best we can to slow down the process, especially. Any trees that are close to property lines and things like that, to keep property owners safe as well as anyone who maybe is passing through that public park space. Again, a space like Senegal Creek that's heavily wooded doesn't really have a a true walking or a real thoroughfare or anything like that. Not as large of a concern, but in an instance like this. We we show quite a bit more concern because of where it is located. So just so everyone understands that. So each each removal be be on a case by case basis. And that's kind of recommendation of the Department of Forestry, if you remember as well. Really just mitigating mitigating risk and and doing what's safest for the community. So.
That's in our board here and in an area where I park, I walk. Have the neighboring residents, will they be personally, they're so close to it, be personally notified that those trees and that this whole issue?
Yeah, we will be hopefully reaching out to these folks and making them aware of this incidence going, especially just because it's right in their backyard. We talked about doing mailings and things like that specifically to, it's just the neighbors directly surrounding the park space. Just so they're aware, we want to also inform the community because it it is going to be kind of intermittent. There might be certain locations. We haven't identified a ton of ash trees in our specific park system at this time, but we are, we'll look into that as an option as well.
It was interesting to see that they don't migrate. So what's causing the issue is that like someone sees a bad tree, they cut it down and try to move it. And it's interesting because that is exactly the area which I represent and live in. And I actually thought I saw one and my husband said, no, they're not in our area. So.
No, no, they they are. They're supposedly not active until about April, late April. They kind of tend to tend to come out and 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 they can migrate. It's just not far distances. And so what you'll end up seeing in this instance is we'll probably will end up chipping. So if you chip it down to a certain size, the the beetle doesn't have enough to survive on. When it's in its larva state, and so the the beetle will die at that point. And so that's what we'll end up doing in this case is chipping that material within the park and so. And leave it on the property. Yeah.
I know there's like children in that area. This beetle won't do any harm to to humans or children or they got a beetle bite or.
Not not that I know of. I'm not an expert though.
Kids walking in that area.
No, not in, not not that I know. No, not in not not that I know of, but I'm by far not an expert when it comes to comes to that. So but yeah, so we're going to just be looking again on this by case by case. But you will see a significant amount of trees coming down in wifles. And then we'll look at finding an ideal, working with one of the arborists who work with on a regular basis and reaching out to them and identifying probably some of the best trees to kind of replant in that.
Jesse. Sure, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying that's my neighborhood, so I really am glad to hear about this right now because I'm sure.
Yeah.
So I think there's a lot of awareness in in Oregon about this particular issue. And we do have a constituency that's very passionate about trees.
Yes.
And tree tree removal is is something people care about. Can we put something on the webpage and maybe has a schedule of the ash tree removal just on this topic where people can look and see?
We could add it to the webpage that Maricela is adding. Yeah, so when we do have a scheduled removal, we could put it.
If people call concerned about trees being removed in the park, we can point people to that as an information source because there's going to be a lot of ash trees, eventually all of them cut down or.
Or or dying on their own, yeah, exactly.
And what is the fine for moving an ash ash tree out of?
There is.
Is there a restricted?
Oh, I don't know the actual fine. Yeah, so it's.
It's twenty five thousand dollars.
Is it really?
Yeah.
So if a private citizen removed an ash tree from their yard, they could be possibly fined?
No.
No, there's there's.
Quarantine.
Out of the quarantine zone.
Getting out of that area, you might.
So Marion County is, I think, considered the quarantine area. And so somewhere someone were to remove the tree and then transport it across county lines, then then it risks the transfer of that beetle into other parts of the state. And so that's why they consider it a quarantine zone.
I wonder if anybody would have been fined for that.
It's a good question.
I don't know. I don't know who does that.
And who's identifying that, yeah, it's a good question.
Appreciate that information on the webpage to make sure people have an excellent word of call if they have questions, things like that.
Yeah, we definitely will have that information.
On private property, I I know because I've seen them driving around.
Because there might be a resident who says, I'm not sure if I have the beetles or if it is on my tree, then.
That's going to be a big part of identifying all the trees.
Yeah.
So Jesse, I have a few questions. You said you you have three marked in Wiffus Park, but then you said you found more. Are they ash trees or are they another kind of?
No, they're ash. They're they're specific ash trees, yeah, at this time.
So so you cut down an ash tree and move it to another property in Woodburn to season it for firewood? Is it potentially, I won't use, I don't want to say infecting, but can you, will they habitat other trees, say oak trees or black walnut trees?
Not this, I believe that this beetle specific is specific to ash. There might be one other tree, but there is actually another beetle that isn't as well talked about. I think it's an oak, a white oak beetle, if I remember correctly. And this is up in Wilsonville, I believe, that they're starting to see that, so.
You mentioned here also olive and white fringe trees. Are those trees that we're going to have to remove all of those as well?
Those were the other trees that this specific beetle is attracted to, but I don't believe those are as common in our area. So but I am by far not an arborist. So there was, it was the olive and I'm sorry, what was the other?
The white fringe tree.
Thank you, yeah. But it is a pretty narrow scope in which this beetle does focus on. It's not, it doesn't like, it's not going to start attacking maples or anything at this time to at least the knowledge that we've been shared, so.
So so we'll make sure that the quarantine flyers also on the website, as we said, Maricela is going to, you know, periodically set reminders out for residents. And Scott, it was a schedule of tree removal that you want added when when the city like.
Yeah, I think it'd just be helpful if if we're removing significant number of trees, people are going to notice.
Okay.
You know, there's a constituency that's passionate about this and it'd be nice just to have an information resource that people could look and see if when we're doing the work, where we're doing the work and trees we're removing or why.
Yeah, and we'll specifically house that on this same page. I think that makes sense with because it's directly to the ash tree. If for some reason there's another massive tree removal incidents, we'll obviously make the council on everyone.
We're taking out ten trees.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you know, the mayor asked kind of what are we doing in response and, you know, seeking funding, trying to get funding assistance, not only to help the city in in response, but if we can pass some funding assistance to property owners who are infected because we know that removal of trees can cost money. What we've heard from Department of Forestry is you want to get ahead of this rather than waiting. So if you can identify and know that you have an ash tree, this can takes, you know, one to three years for the decline to show once it becomes infested. But arborists find, once the tree starts dying, that it's much more hazardous to deal with if you prolong and wait for it to to. So they actually surprisingly say to the city, identify your ash trees and start taking them down so that you're not getting a more expensive costs when the arborist has more threat and danger for taking it down. But but Jesse will be kind of on a case by case basis assessing, you know, if we can just leave them in Senegal, they won't be spread, we can create snags and it can just stay there, that's going to save the city money and Department of Forestry is okay with that. So again, it has to be pretty site specific, specific and property owners will have to make those determinations for themselves.
The first presentation, there was the Forest Service talked about that actually is a pesticide that can be utilized, not real easily because it's got to be injected.
Yes, be injected into the root system and and it and it's a kind of Band-Aid. It's not a full fix.
But has there been any kind, well, part of the discussion should be contacts with pesticide companies, see if they.
And I think that is, that might actually go through a lot of arborist companies or things like that as well, specific to trees health, but yeah.
Was a breed of hornet that will kill the beetle. We, I was thinking we could raise and release hornets as a.
That was the legitimate thing that did get presented. One other item I wanted to confirm with her. Don't see any problems with that happening, Jurassic Park, anyone, um, but so.
What if the pictures showed Woodpecker's digging holes?
Yeah, yeah.
Jesse, that's that's good.
Grabbing the wood.
Oh, yeah, so they'll.
See the beetle.
Right, but one other item I did want to point out, so for the private property owners as well, and I wanted to confirm with Chris, our planning director, is that if anyone came in to with a removal of a for an ash tree, there won't be any charge for the tree permit in that in that case. And so obviously, because this is kind of an inevitable thing, but wanted to make that everyone aware of that as well.
We've had a discussion. If an emergency ordinance needs to be brought before the city council to waive those fees, we'll do so. We have not had property owners yet. It, this could be something that needs to be done in six months or a year. So we'll present that to you, but right now, you know, we're waiting to hear if it's going to become an.
Well, I think we do what we need to do right now.
Yeah, and just operate in good faith.
Getting the education out there and and the identification, what's what we have.
So the city signed up to be one of these property owners that's interested with depart, again, Department of Agriculture that were interested in being involved and want support. If you have certified volunteers that can come assist the city in this assessment. So we've signed up to this. I also want to make sure that property owners, private property owners have this. So we'll make sure this link is available to folks, that if you think you have ash trees and you're seeking assistance, there's no guarantee that Department of Agriculture is going to show up the next day, but we want resources that are available to us when we're seeking assistance to be available to private property owners in town as well. And I'm sorry, there was one last slide, just a link to resources. So we will make sure that that's available. That last link is Woodburn's Urban Forestry Program. So we've got language and resources up there, OSU Extension and and really Department of Forestry. Those are the experts. We're not creating new information, but we will make, can you put it back? We will make sure the links are available.
Yeah, it'll be all on the website.
Yeah, so that's it. We'll we'll be coming back to you periodically, but yes, please get help get the word out to private property owners as well.
Okay, thank you both. So moving on communications, Susan, I actually did receive a letter that I forgot to bring in from Loving that was very appreciative of the city's support and help in their program at the end of the year. Very nice letter. Get copies to everybody. Next up is business from the public. This allows the public to use items for council consideration that is not on the schedule on the agenda. I do have some speaker cards that I will call people up. We do have limit comment time to three minutes. So first up, I have Alyssa Downs.
I'm just curious.
So who's going to go first? And you are? Laurel Boone, okay.
Also, you kind of have to talk close in the mic so we can hear, otherwise we can't hear.
Can you hear me? Okay, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Laurel Boone and I'm speaking to you on behalf of the New Smith Creek Neighborhood, the new addition. We were concerned about the traffic issues there and I reached out to Mary Beth, who was very kind enough to pass our concerns off to the mayor, who was also very kind to email me back and ask me to come and speak to you. So beginning in 2021 with the completion of most of the streets in the new addition, the neighborhood has experienced speeders every day and not just a few miles per hour over the limit, but forty and fifty and plus miles per hour. There have been numerous wrecks at all hours of the day, seven in the morning, seven at night, one in one in the morning, and people are getting these on their ring and other cameras from their homes. One car was going so fast on Killing Springs by Nellie Muir that he flipped over right in front of the school during the day. And these reckless and drunk drivers that have totaled people's parked cars, just, I mean, totaled them. So they are going that fast down the residential narrow streets and they're totaling trucks from going so fast. They have torn up front yards and trees, they've driven up on sidewalks and frightened adults and children alike. In fact, one driver was so out of control on Ben Brown, he tore out an entire playground structure. And thank goodness, there were no kids or adults hurt. It has not been replaced due to the due to fears it will happen again. There have been racing and cars spinning donuts in the intersections again at all times with no consideration for anyone. We've called the cops and sometimes they come and sometimes they don't. And this is happening again all hours of the day. I've received some suggestions on how to make our neighborhood a little safer with regards to traffic. Someone talked about having, they had the wide speed bumps. I know there's a couple of them in our neighborhood already on Bren Brown, but having one of the wide speed bumps where the old and the new Smith Drive come together. There's a lot of people that speed down Smith Drive into the new Smith Drive. There's no stop signs or anything there. And then probably a four way stop at Killian Springs and Smith Drive. There's a lot of people that run those stop signs and then or just fly down the road without any consideration. Another stop sign or crosswalk on Killian Springs closer to the school, maybe some school zone signs, slow to twenty miles per hour. I don't believe there's anything on Killing Springs of that sort at all down to Nellie Muir. Another another suggestion was a three way stop sign at Ben Brown and Smith Drive. There's only the stop sign when you're coming out Smith Drive to turn right or left on Ben Brown. And because there isn't, from the time that you turn onto Ben Brown off.
And that's that's your time.
Oh, okay, sorry.
If you have, are you reading from written comments that you drafted?
Yes.
Could you leave those with us and I'll make.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I just had other people that came to support us that have other issues.
Glad to hear from Ruth West. You want to say something? Yeah, please, you can come up. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Might be too short. Can you hear me?
Get a little closer to it.
There you can hear me there?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Ruth West. I live on Smith Drive, which is Settlemire. Maple is the cross street, Smith Drive. I live three doors from the stop sign. My son's vehicle was parked out in front of our home. Somebody sometime after ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night hit the bumper on his truck. We found out it was a Nissan. There was Nissan parts all over in the street. My son had tow truck company come out and pulled the bumper out just so he could drive the car. So we had a police report. They put it in a speed thing at the end of the street, which that works for about so long. But I stand out in front of my house sometimes at night and I see people not even stop at a stop sign. They just turn and go. Down at the end of my street, going towards the new addition area, there's a sharp corner there. And I see a house down at the end of that corner and I just keep waiting for some car to go flying off of that corner because they misjudge it and end up in those people's house. I have kids that go out and ride bicycles. I've been flipped off by people because I'm trying to get them to slow down. I have the green slowdown man out there and they just speed up and drive by me like I'm an idiot. My suggestion, because some people didn't want speed bumps, they have motorhomes, boats and this sort of thing, is the new additionary down off of Settlemire, the housing on the other side of the tracks. If anyone's noticed, they have gates and it says emergency only. My suggestion was put a gate. Right there, and that would stop all that speeding down around that corner because the area has lots of roads in and out from there. And there are time, and I drive pretty slow going down the road because I've almost been hit on Garfield and Smith because they're not stopping. I have the right of way and they just look at me like, oh, sorry. And if I hadn't have been going slow, I would have hit him right in the passenger door. And then it would have been probably considered my fault because I hit them even though I had the right of way. So that is concerning. Now, I I slowed down before I ever get there, just after those two times. And that was in a two week period. So it's sad that the elderly people that live in that neighborhood, I worry about them coming around that corner. A lot of people get in between cars because they know now that that corner is not safe. And people walk their dogs, families walk that neighborhood. And it's sad when kids can't even go out and ride their bikes.
Thank you very much for your comments. Great, appreciate you coming in and sharing. Anyone else like to come up?
Hey there, I'm Alyssa Downs. I also live in the Smith Creek addition. I haven't had an issue myself exactly, but I can, I just wanted to come and give testimony that I see the social media posts where people's cars are hit. There was a car that went up on the sidewalk the other day with the, like, took a tree out. And it's it's regular, it's really regular. And I, my concern about it is we're so close to like Nellie Muir School. There's families in the neighborhood, there's kids in the neighborhood. Our house is right next to a Greenway walkthrough and there's so far, thankfully, I haven't seen people doing donuts as much right there, but like, that's one of my fears is that they would. Or I I just don't want it to be an issue where it's going to have to, you know, some kid's going to get hit by a car for it to be like a serious issue because you hear it like at night, always consistently at night, street racing going on. And it's sometimes across, there's a wetland area behind us and you can hear it, you know, I think it's on the other side of that area. So it's, you know, less than a quarter mile away. But you hear it consistently on the weekends and I just want to be a part of helping address the situation, whether that's speed bumps. I know in Woodburn Estates, we have friends that live over there where I think it was a similar thing like to the suggestion that was just made about putting a gate. I know that they had a street racing problem over there before I had heard years back. And I think that helps reduce that problem in that community as well, in that neighborhood. So anyway, yeah, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your coverage. Anyone else in the audience like to talk about this subject? So I will say this is is a concern of the entire city council and our Public Works Department and our Police Department. I appreciate you coming in and sharing your issues and the locations. And I think I had mentioned to you before that we were going to discuss this. It happened to be a goal of about four or five of us at our goal setting session this weekend. And we're looking at at options along with our Public Works and and our police to not just your neighborhood, it's other. to, uh, not just your neighborhood, it's other neighborhoods too, that we're looking at seeing what we can do to, uh, slow down and control traffic. So give us a little time and we're looking at the best options to what we can do. Uh, I don't want to get in a debate with anyone on what's good or what's bad right now, but, uh, I greatly appreciate you coming in and sharing those concerns, similar to some of the ones that what we, we shared over, over the weekend. Anyone on the council have anything to add to that?
Just two thoughts. One is, and I, I really do appreciate your concerns. I, I share them and I live nowhere near there. I live on the east side of town, but we hear and see the traffic quite a bit over there as well. And we've heard from other residents in other parts of the city. So it seems to be rather endemic throughout the city that we're having this issue. So, you know, we, I think we want to look at it from a more comprehensive citywide approach to try to get a handle on it because it is, it's both annoying and more than that, it's, it's dangerous. We want to try to get ahead of, uh, preventing any serious injuries or deaths for sure.
Okay. Then moving on, I do have one more dagger. Did you want to talk now under business from the public or? We are gonna bring it up a couple of times, we're talking about the community center later.
Yeah.
Okay. Next item is our consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be adopted, adapted, adopted by one motion. Any item may be removed, discussion at the request of current council. So I would like our city reporter, please, to read off the items allowed on the consent agenda.
The items on the consent agenda are as follows. Woodburn City Council minutes of February tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Traffic enforcement report for November two thousand twenty-four through January two thousand twenty-five. Liquor license application for Woodburn Plaza Market LLC. Marion County Ballot Box IGA renewal and Fire District IGA for Sprite, fire sprinkler, fire alarm, fire light safety inspections and plan review.
Thank you. Is there any item that? Any council would like to pull off the consent agenda? Or not, I would accept a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move to, uh, accept the consent agenda as presented.
You have second?
Second.
Move the second at all in favor, sticking for the ninth?
Aye.
Oppose with same? Motion passes unanimously. Next up, uh, we do not have any table business. We do have a public hearing on alternative contracting method for construction of the Woodburn Community Center. So.
I'll defer to Candy, but I'll get up here.
I've opened the public hearing.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilors. Uh, Mackenzie Grant, I'm your city attorney. Um, generally Jim Rau would be providing this presentation, but he's unavailable this evening. Um, so I just wanted to cover the alternative contracting method that the staff is proposing you adopt for the construction of the Woodburn Community Center project. Um, and, you know, generally we follow Oregon revised statutes for procurement and competitive bidding for public improvement contracts. The default rule is that we design, um, the project and then we put those designs out for a formal bid and we award the contract to the lowest bidder. Um, we are proposing an alternative contracting method for this particular project, um, due to a number of factors that I can talk about in some more detail if you have questions. Um, but, you know, you can go through the findings that we are proposing you adopt this evening, um, to justify the alternative contracting method. But this is particularly called a CMGC or Construction Management General Contractor Form of Procurement. And it means that instead of completing a hundred percent of the design work and then bringing on a general contractor to complete the construction of the project, we want to bring that general contractor on during the design phase. And that's really, really important, um, so that they can, in partnership with both the architect and the city, work as a team to, you know, look at things like, um, value design engineering, um, material costs upfront, you know, through the design process to help, you know, ensure that we don't run into, um, equipment shortages, material shortages, labor shortages, um, so that, you know, that general contractor, again, is coming on to the project much earlier during the design phase and then we ensure that we are, you know, completing the project in a timely and more efficient manner. Um, this is the first time that the city has used a CMGC or we're proposing to use a CMGC procurement process, um, but it is not a new process. Um, it's been used in the private sector for a very, very long time and even in the public sector in Oregon, probably for a good twenty to twenty-five years as a pretty standard form of procurement, um, particularly with large capital construction projects, um, basically anything over two million. Obviously, the construction, um, budget for this project is gonna be closer to twenty million. So again, it just really makes sense due to all the complexities that go along with a project this size. I'm happy to answer any specific questions about the proposed findings that we are asking you to adopt this evening, um, that again justify the city moving forward with this alternative contracting method.
Any questions at this time?
Good.
Oh, go ahead.
I just had a question on the, um, the, so it should not increase the cost of our construction bid. So, because that construction may not even actually start hammering nails until, um, you know, way down the road, but billing and then final payments, are, were those are gonna be aligned with the actual, you know, timeline for construction, so.
Yeah, so, um, a little bit about how this procedure works. You know, you'll see another agenda item, uh, you know, following this one that is the award for the architectural services. So that is the firm that will be hired to complete all the design and engineering work, um, in partnership with the CMGC that we ultimately award a contract to in about a month. Um, we're still working through the procurement process for that. Um, but the CMGC will have kind of two phases to their contract. One is called pre-construction and we will negotiate the rates that go along with pre-construction consulting services. And then, once we get closer to about a hundred percent of the design completion, the city and the CMGC will sit down again and we will negotiate what's called a guaranteed maximum price for the contract. And once we have settled on that guaranteed maximum price, that's the number that will not change and we'll bring that to the city council and brief you on what that is. Um, but it gives us that opportunity through the design process to, you know, again, negotiate as a team towards what that guaranteed maximum price is. And then the general contractor delivers the project under that guaranteed maximum price. There are additional requirements once they enter into phase two. Um, so we talked about pre-construction costs that, you know, those would get billed monthly just as we would with any other design consultant. And then, um, once we enter the construction phase, that phase two of the project where things are actually getting built, um, there's very, very specific rules on, um, we follow, uh, state statutory rules on how much of the project we pay on an incremental basis towards the completion of construction and we retain a certain amount still until the project is complete. So those standardized, um, methods of payment don't change even under this procedure. And the general contractor has two different options during the construction phase. They can do, um, self-performance of the construction work themselves or they can bid out different parts that are subcontracted and those subcontracted, uh, components are still bid under a low bidder procedure. Okay. Is part, is the contractor that's hired, is that like the architecture company that they work closely with or do we still have control over that portion? Yes, so, um, the CMGC that we will eventually enter into a contract with, um, is their selection process completely separate from our selection of the architect? So we have already issued an RFP and we are closing that, um, RFP proposal.
March twenty-fourth is when it will be coming to the council.
Yeah, but when does the actual proposal deadline? Is it this Friday?
Yes, it is next Friday.
So, um, we will receive proposals from qualified general contracting firms through this Friday. Once we receive those, they get evaluated by a staff committee, um, based off of specific criteria that's in that RFP and then we'll probably interview with two or three of the top ranking firms and then bring a, um, recommendation to award that contract at the, your March twenty-fourth meeting.
And one of those criteria is cost, in which is value, it's one of the scoring metrics. It's just not the sole lowest bid type of contract.
Any other questions at this time? Jesse, you have anything to add?
Nothing to that. Mackenzie should do my staff report too. Okay.
Um, do we have any testimony by proponents? Anyone that is in favor of this program?
Sit on. Hello. Uh, my name is Doc McKenna. I live on five eighty-six Grand Street in Woodburn. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council members. And, uh, I have, I would like to speak out in, in, uh, as a positive for this approach. I have been an engineer in aerospace and aviation for over thirty years and I'm retired now and I can tell you, when you do an approach like this where you involve the people that will actually build something, um, and design for, uh, manufacturability in my, in my career was a big deal. But I also, in, in the long run, you will always save money. It will be upfront a little more expensive, but in the long run, it will always save you money if you're smart about it. But I would also encourage you to consider to add another component. So in my world, it was called, so one, as we were talking about this approach is design for manufacturability, but I also would like to encourage design for maintainability. So let me give you a, a stupid example. If you have a seal, in, um, in my world, it was big helicopters. If you have a seal, but every, and you need to exchange it every five hundred hours and, but you need to take the whole engine off every single time. So maintenance nightmare, costs will rise in the maintenance department. So if you can incorporate that early on in the same approach as having a, uh, the construction people really say, okay, I can do A, B, C, then it'll go zipping along. But if that causes later on issues, think about that building needs to last another thirty, forty, fifty years? So I would like to just add that as a little extra.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good idea. Is that a idea that, uh, we can bring up with the contractor at the time that, of the meeting? Looking to, obviously we're concerned about maintenance here in the future.
Yeah, and I think in, in design, especially bringing on the contractor, you know, ongoing maintenance and being able to access equipment, you know, you think about rooftop units, how easy is it going to, um, be to maintain those things or those, are we gonna need to, you know, rent out cranes, things like that? Any type of the mechanical we're looking and hoping to replace in the aquatic section or add new? Are we adding better efficiencies there? Um, and, and anything like that? And then, you know, to Dagmar's point as well as, as maintenance schedules and things like that and making sure we're, we're keeping on top of those things and, and replacement schedules. Some looking at those, especially once the, the center comes online and what that looks like moving forward, um, with the possibility of funding or different items to make sure that things are maintained properly on a regular basis.
Good, thank you. Any other proponents? Do we have any opponents, anyone that is against this concept? Then, moving on, I will close the public hearing and open up for discussion of the council. If we're all in agreement, then I would.
I just wanted to comment, I really appreciate you had the knowledge and foresight to set this up. It's, it's really, especially under pressure. And it wasn't only a short period of time ago, there was a whole different plan.
It's still under pressure.
Yeah. I, I think, I think we did have this concept in, in plan, whether the bond passed or not, if we remove board, like this is the model we were looking at that's been successful in cost savings, um, and just from an efficiency standpoint, so.
Timelines are the essence on this project.
Yes.
And I think I, I looked at the fire chief and kind of smiled. I think you did this process for the fire, uh, the new building, uh, do you go? Yeah.
Great.
I like it. Well, take it.
Um, I'd like to thank Jesse, you and Mackenzie and Jim. This is an excellent report. You answered a lot of questions, anticipated a lot of questions and answered them in advance. But this is, is one of the better reports that I've seen, you know, preparing us for, uh, it's a lot of information, but good informations.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Then I would, uh, actually we'll move on to general business. And our first item is council bill number thirty-two seventy-three, choose the resolution.
Yes, um, council bill number, uh, thirty-two seventy-three. It's a resolution adopting findings in support of alternative contracting method in lieu of competitive building or bidding, rather, uh, for the construction of the Woodburn Community Center.
Thank you. Council bill thirty-two seventy-three has been duly introduced and as a resolution requires one reading and maybe please have that reading by title only if there's no objection.
Council bill number thirty-two seventy-three, a resolution adopting findings in support of alternative contracting method in lieu of competitive bidding for the construction of the Woodburn Community Center.
Thank you. Any discussion, official discussion? I mean, we have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Wilk?
Yes.
Counselor Cornwell?
Yes.
Counselor Grehalva?
Yeah.
Counselor Cantu?
Yes.
Counselor Shab?
Yes.
Counselor Brieswela?
Yes.
Thank you, council bill thirty-two seventy-three has been duly passed unanimous vote. Moving on, we have a personal service agreement with Opsis Architectural.
Uh, good evening, City Council, um, and Mayor Lennergan. Um, Jesse Quam, Community Service Director here with you tonight. So, um, this is one of the larger dominos. This is a contract for Opsis Architecture, um, in the amount of two million dollars, uh, two million, three hundred and ninety thousand dollar, three hundred and ninety, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And then additional, yeah, a lot of digits there, right? It's, you know, when it has more than my phone number, there's a problem. Um, so, and then an estimated forty-six thousand eight hundred, uh, sixty-eight dollars for, um, additional, um, services, um, along with this contract. And so some background, everything, everyone's pretty aware, but obviously following in the November, um, bond failing, um, city staff went back and evaluated especially the fifty million dollars that was allocated from the state and, and worked closely, um, with, um, council to kind of make, ensure that city, the city was still able to secure those funds. And then in late January, um, we were informed that we were still, um, with a reduced scope project, we would still be allowed to use that fifty million dollars from the state. We understand how much that, um, funding means to the city of Woodburn, um, less so to the state at that number. They don't see it as much, obviously with, you know, significant overages that they've seen in their budget, so. Um, but we, so with that, we've been in the process currently of, um, re-scoping the project. Um, we have lost significant components of this project. For anyone to think that we're still gonna be able to build a sixty million dollar for twenty million, it just doesn't work that way. So we're losing the double gymnasium, we're losing the walk drag track, we're losing the warm water pool. Um, but we still felt like we had a very viable project and still could incorporate a lot of what the community center advisor committee was hoping to see out of this project. So we're in the process of finalizing kind of a re-scoping of this, of this work, um, in this month with Opsis Architecture. And so, um, to fit within that twenty million dollar bucket, which again fifteen million dollar from, well, fifteen million will be from the state and five million dollars will be from Park SDCs, again, and no additional, um, funding from the taxpayers needed for this project. So it's some history there. This would be a significant, like, expansion improvement to the current aquatic center. So we're still gonna see event space that will seat about, you know, two hundred people in an event styles banquet style, um, setting. We're gonna have a fitness to two thousand square foot fitness space and, um, as well as significant improvements into the, and updates into the current natatorium or current pool area, new front end and locker room spaces as well, um, and commercial kitchen. So, uh, a lot of significant improvements to the current aquatic center and expansion and some significant square footage with an estimate between twelve and seventeen thousand square feet. We're still engineering that for cost reasons, trying to get as much as we can in for, uh, for the dollars we have. Um, again, a three thousand square foot, um, facility, um, when it comes to the event space, um, is still on, on the table for development as well as the fitness facility. So cardio weight facility that's about over two thousand square feet, um, locker rooms, updated reception area, expanded parking lot. Um, if you've gone to the aquatic center in the mornings or goodness gracious on a summer, you can see parking goes all the way into Settlemire Park in the field there. Um, so that is definitely needed as well as, um, significant, um, upgrades to the aquatic spaces, we said. And that would include into the mechanical spaces. We are looking at updating those as well, um, to. And that would include into the mechanical spaces. We are looking at updating those as well to, you know, kind of keep up with updated entire building. And one other component I do want to point out with this design work that we've been working with Opsis for is kind of historically pieces. We're building it in the, the concept if, if for some reason money rained down from the heavens and we were able to get six to seven million dollars to build the gymnasium, that we can kind of put a Lego piece right where it was supposed to go. And it wouldn't be a whole redesign of the building. So that's important. One other point I want to point out, because some of you have been on council and seen Opsis come up a few times over the past several years. They were the original design team that was selected for this project. And with the initial million dollars we received from the state, that went to design development documents. And they worked through the, went, worked through the community center advisor committee and several other spaces to, to get this to happen. And so they, we, a lot of that work happened. And the nice thing is even with us reworking this project, we're not having to go back to zero. We're actually able to build a lot off of that. We are downsizing a lot of what we had to do or we're taking pieces out. But the nice thing of how that whole structure, that larger plan was built is it was kind of modular and we can take away pieces without it being detrimental to the whole design. So we're not having to go back to square one, so that money that was invested, even though state dollars is not lost. It's just kind of being reworked. So the agreement before you all tonight is really to continue services throughout the entirety of this project for architectural and engineering services. And so why that, they, Opsis will be managing this project from the architectural side as well as all the consultants when it comes to HVAC, you know, emergency services, all the different things are all kind of worked into this piece here. And they'll be working with that CMGC that Mackenzie, so beautiful, we talked about earlier to, and city staff and others to really come up with a design that is cost effective as well. So you have the design folks with architectural engineering, but then working with the real world hands in the work right now with the CMGC coming up with cost assessments, because the architects might say, hey, we've used this material over past several projects. But the CMGC we hope to bring on at the end of March will say, well, that, that cost of that material has gone up 200% in the past month. So we need to look at a different avenue that will hopefully still has the same longevity and things like that. So this is a very large contract, but it is for the entirety of the work to be completed from the architectural and engineering side. And so that is what's really before you tonight on kind of a high level. You have a timeline as well, estimated timeline in the staff report also, when it comes to this, you know, with an ideal construction date. Really starting and probably you're looking at winter of 2020, it's going to be January, probably 2026 is what it really is looking at at this point. That is, you know, until, that is always going to be a moving target. This is such a large project. Things are just going to happen. But that's kind of an updated timeline. What we're looking at now is probably construction starting in January of 2026 at this time, because we still have to get through our construction documents. And that's why I said we're going to bring on our, our CMGC in conjunction with as well. So we're finishing up the design documents and, and then we will move into the construction documents. So with that, I'm open for any questions. There is a pretty nice write-up that, in the proposal that the Opsis did provide that provides a good breakdown of the different steps in which they're, you know, which each thing really means when it comes to architectural design, structural design, mechanical, et cetera, all of these components. So again, I really do want to highlight that it's, it's really detailed oriented pieces that they're going to help oversee or their consultants, sub consultants will be seeing. So whether it becomes aquatics pieces, electrical engineering, like I said, HVAC, a lot of different components to this project. And then there's different, different phases, like I said, with the finishing of design document going to construction and then bidding and permitting, permitting, et cetera. And honestly, it's, it's been really nice to, to work with Opsis and having such a cohesive city staff. They were pretty impressed when we had our planning director in the room providing input, because they're like, we never get the planning director at this stage. And we're already kind of finding, ironing out some of the kinks, because we're looking at it high level with people who are going to make, we're not going to run into as many roadblocks on the road, right? Because we've already reviewed it in that case. So we're like, they wish all city projects that they had kind of brought people on this early to have these conversations. We have our public work staff in early. So we're really trying to cut down, create as many efficiencies and, you know, dissolve as many roadblocks as possible throughout this project.
Thank you, Jesse.
Absolutely.
Questions from the council?
I have no question. I was just impressed with, you know, in fact, what Opus pulled together.
Yeah.
All the detail. I thought that was very professional and lots of information.
Yeah. And it's really nice how it broke it, broke it down, right?
Yes.
Into those different subcategories, because you start to hear these terms and they all just kind of blur together in the blender. And you're like, architectural design, design, you know what I mean? And so then to see him define, you're like, okay, he starts to grasp it a little bit better.
Then I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. Thank you. I move to authorize the city administrator to enter into a personal service, services agreement with Opus Architectural LLP in the amount of $2,390,258 plus reimbursable expenses estimated to be $46,868 to provide complete architectural and engineering design services, including construction, administration, and closeout work for the community center project.
Thank you. That was a mouthful.
I was.
Is there a second? Second? All in favor, second vote tonight?
Aye.
Aye.
All of us are the same? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Huge step.
Thank you very much. This is a big step.
Yeah.
This is, this is big. Next up, we have a resolution looking for a supplemental budget appropriations from the building fund. Good evening again.
Mayor, members of the city council, Tony Turley, Finance Director for the record again.
Point of order. We need to have a reading of the resolution.
Oh, my mistake. This is resolution. I need you to introduce it.
Okay, sir. We were just moving right along. Council bill number 3274, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriation for the building fund for financial year 2024 to 2025 to account for increased pass-through revenues from permit activity and authorizing transfer out of the building fund contingency and reserves for the fire department allocation of the fire plan review fees.
Thank you. Council bill 3274 has been duly introduced and is for the resolution. And as such, requires one reading. May we please have that reading by title only if there's no objection.
Council bill number 3274, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget and making appropriations for the building fund for financial year 2024-2025 to account for increased pass-through revenue from permit activity and authorizing transfer out of the building fund contingency and reserves for the fire, for fire department allocation of fire plan review fees.
Thank you. 3274 has been duly introduced. Said that earlier. Now, staff report.
That's okay. Honorable mayor, members of the city council, Tony Turley, the Finance Director. So this is one of those, part of this is a, is one of those good things that we have so much building activity with residential construction. Approximately 250 additional homes are projected now to happen through the year than what was anticipated when we did the original budget. And that impacts the construction excise tax that's passed through to the school district and also the straight, the state. My mind just went blank. Let me look down. The, the state surcharge that is collected on behalf of the state for the permit activity. And so those, we needed to budget additional funds, so $600,000 additional in the CET and $90,000 additional for the state surcharge. In addition, in the consent agenda, item E, we did the IGA with the fire department to put some of the plan review for fire plan review and share that money with the fire department. And that was not in any of the budget activity that we had to begin the year. So that's the transfer from contingency of $70,000 to appropriate the funds so that we can be in compliance with the IGA. The, neither the, the transfer from contingency or the additional supplemental budget caused the staff to have a public hearing. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does council have any questions? I think you're good. Then could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Cantu?
Yes.
Counselor Shab?
Yes.
Counselor Brieswela?
Yes.
Counselor Griehalva?
Yes.
Counselor Cornwell?
Yes.
Counselor Wilk?
Yes. Council bill 3274 has been duly passed. Thank you. Moving on, do not have any planning commission or administrative land use actions. So we'll go to the city administrators' report.
As I appreciate spending Friday and Saturday with the council, I thought it was a good session and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on then to council reports, council, council.
Thank you for this. This is beautiful. Thank you. Is it in Spanish? I mean, English or Russian? Okay. It's beautiful. Thank you. And thank you for Saturday, you guys. That was a good, I was telling my family that a year ago, when we were anticipating coming on to council, all of the projects that we talked about on Friday and Saturday were stuff that was on our hearts. And it's really good to see us moving in such a night, a strong way.
Thank you. Counsel Andrew?
It was really fun spending nine hours with all of you guys, Friday, Saturday morning.
Only nine?
No, but seriously, I mean, it's all good people and we accomplished a lot and the discussions were excellent. So thanks for that. Afterwards, I couldn't attend the chamber buncow, but I swung by with a raffle. It looked like it was good attendance. And then this Friday morning, the chamber is doing their ribbon cutting at their new location here in downtown. So we welcome everybody to come to that. 7:30 to 8 is networking. 8 to 9, we'll do our standard chamber thing. I'm sure John Zobres, the executive director, will talk about our move and we're very excited. So that's all.
Nice building.
Yes, beautiful.
Counsel World?
Well, I'm certainly excited to see the chamber moving back downtown. And I was real happy to be able to spend additional time this weekend with staff and other counselors and the mayor in developing some planning for the upcoming year. And so I, it's with a bit of sadness that I need to make an announcement that I'm going to keep you all just a bit longer. Some of you know that I was a lawyer for 40 years or more and I'm still in retired status with the state bar. So I just wanted to take this moment to acknowledge that on this date, 222 years ago, the US Supreme Court issued a decision that many regard as the most important case involving constitutional law in our nation's history. In the case of Marbury versus Madison, Chief Justice Marshall held that the Supreme Court and that all federal courts have the right of, of judicial review of the actions of the Congress and the executive, the president. And that basically gives courts the power to strike down laws and actions that violate the US Constitution. And so why is Counselor Wilk bringing this up at this point in time? Well, as of this date, since January 20th, there's been over 90 lawsuits filed in the federal courts of this country challenging the executive actions that have taken place in that short period of time. And there have been 28 separate judges issuing orders binding certain actions to be in violation of the Constitution. And I think it's just important that we, we do have a country of laws where we have a separation of powers and the importance to, to acknowledge the importance of our court system, our judicial system as part of our government. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wilk. Appreciate that.
History lesson.
Information.
Thank you.
I hope you don't ever forget that. Counsel Shab? Have to follow.
That was, yeah, thank you. Very important message. Repeating a history that we need to pay attention to today. I just want you to know that I had a great time on our goal setting. Friday was really hurried up. But Saturday, I left here inspired, you know, just the staff who, you know, presented, you know, everything that they, they do. And we got to get to know all of our new counselors, which I think is really important. And so we all had an understanding of, you know, where we're going and how we want to get there. Anyway, it was great. I think the public should know that we were working.
Nine hours.
Yes, yes. For free.
I'm paying.
Counsel Brieswela?
She, I just want to say that it was, was fun and was intense. I learned a lot about each one of the people that presented. And I'm just excited to be part of this council and excited to live in a town that is fully so much. And just excited to, to see all the goals that we have in place. Get a promise. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Counsel Cornwell?
Last but not least, I really appreciate how we all worked so smoothly together. Some of the questions that were being asked during our meetings were the questions that I was thinking in my mind. I think Wilk and I have some sort of thing going on where we have similar ideas and similar goals. And the amount of time that we spent coming to consensus on what we hoped our goals would be for today forward, it came together so efficiently and so quickly that I was just so astounded, because we had maybe six or eight that we all had on our minds already. So it wasn't like, years before, we had like 40, truthfully. And, and the staff, as always, are just amazing. And it's very inspirational to work with the city that has their act together and they actually like each other. And it's just, it's very encouraging and inspiring. Thank you for letting me be a part of it.
Well, I don't think I can add very much to what's just been said. I also appreciate the camaraderie with the, with the council and the staff. I think the goals that we came up with are very doable, workable and things that should be accomplished in, in a limited time. I look forward to that. And, and I think it might be worthwhile to instead wait another two years to have another goal setting session. Let's look at a review or something in eight, 10 months to a year, so you see how things go. That, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, second vote tonight?
Aye.
Pose? We're out of here. Thank you all.
Under two hours.
That's right.
Thank you.